Kate Hoffman.
Here.
James Coyle.
Here.
Scott Patterson.
Here.
Hamless Rindel.
Here.
Jared Bramerson.
Here.
Carrie Moyer is absent. Tyler Monza.
Here.
All right, on the weekend. Congratulations to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. All right, super posting. The following was posted on seven twenty-nine. It was faxed to Star News, posted at the Municipal Building, at the Black Earth Post Office, and on the webpage www-blackearthwisconsin.com, and faxed for posting to the Cross Plains State Bank, Black Earth Branch. Public comment. Okay. Number five, discussion update on the Grove Knights.
Great. Okay. Hey, so I'm Faith Phelan. I know some of you, I don't know all of you, so hello. We haven't met before.
Yeah, I'm Andy Bartal from the Vice President at the church right now. First, share a couple things and Faith can roll through it, but we can answer questions if you have any.
Yes, I'm the Church Administrator and Building Project Coordinator at New Heights. And so, as you may or may not know, New Heights Church that's just down the street here just bought the Mazamani Elementary School in Mezo. And the goal is to allocate that building in October, once that district, the district has moved kind of to one spot, and develop a community center for the region that we hope to be known as The Grove. So, New Heights as a church will still go on existing and will worship out of that space. But in an effort to really make sure that it's a community space that has community ownership, we do not intend to call that space The Grove in hopes that other organizations and programs can also host and be present and reside and be in that space as well. So, we kind of wanted to give an update on where our project is at and then also be here for any questions we have. As of the goal to be a regional community center, we're really trying to push the whole Black Earth versus Mezo versus Arena, like where are we residing? We hope that I can serve everybody. And so, in that effort, we also would love to hear from you as a board of ways that you can see that partnership working with New Heights and with new location programs that you guys are excited about as a board or initiatives that you would like to see and/or if you're like, these are ways that we think we could be supported in that, that's all on the table right now.
And it is moving from about twelve thousand-ish square feet of use to about sixty. So, a lot of space for us to figure out. Some of it's already being requested or claimed, but we still a long way to go in filling the space of the.
Yeah, thank you. So, at the top of the handout, we gave you a little bit of information. So, again, New Heights is the name of our faith community, and The Grove is that facility and campus, and those will kind of run in that way. The vision team put together a mission and values for that space so that as we grow in partnerships, there's kind of clear expectations. And so, the mission of that space is to provide a space where people can gather, connect, and thrive. And we've identified ways or bumpers that we hope to make that happen. And so, this spring, we did some brainstorming sessions. We tried to promo them on social media and at Coffee with a Cop and in the newspaper, and we had a leadership summit, someone who were able to come to. And we had over a hundred and twenty people participate in that and share what they were thinking and needs that they saw in the whole regional community. And so, you can see on the next page, some of those like top priorities or outcomes that came out of that conversation from both communities. And so, with that, the vision team has now put together kind of their, what does the dream look like when it all comes into one space? And so, the back page then, going back to so I know you're spending time, is kind of the beginning timeline that we're looking at in terms of making this all to come together. So, some big needs that we heard from people were like ongoing educational courses, life skills kinds of things, senior and then the generational activities, places that people can go and have fun, connect, be together. We also heard a lot about wellness classes and like recreational activities. Lots of people everywhere have been like, the gym is important. And so, this is a whole thing, and we hope to continue to be an asset in that way. And then also creative space was a big thing that came out of those brainstorming sessions.
Those are some of the things we think we can move on fairly quick, early into next year. And then the next items on the list are things that are going to take more research. Senior living was one of the top on the list for everybody too in the community where there's a big need there, but there are a lot of pieces to figure out before you just show an apartment in the middle of the building. So, that's a project that we're going to be working on for the next twelve months. Same with childcare, preschool, there's other things you need to do before you can make those considerations. But a lot of steps are just getting put in place that start thinking about and dreaming about what those things can do too.
Exactly. So, we started kind of putting teams together to research the programs that kind of we need to understand more before we kind of make them happen, and then teams that can kind of do more program and partnership outreach pieces as well. So, then the goal is that by this fall, we'll have access to the building in October. And we will have some remodeling things that we know already have to get done, and we also know inflation, and we timed them. Products and items right now are also very unknown, so we're trying to hold everything loosely while also being essential in that process. We're hoping that in 2023, The Grove will open, and it will include ministries of New Heights, thinking about essential needs and, you know, how we gather, as well as other programs the community is excited about hosting and starving and seeing happen too. So, that's kind of the kick for The Grove. At the bottom is just an economic grant that has been made known to us, and we've already turned that outreach. So, we'll be working with Mazamani as well, and we're presenting at a Rina's Board Meeting later this evening as well. We've been to Mazamani and we're here. So, we just want you to know that we're trying to really work with everybody and your thoughts and ideas we can put are valuable, and we'd love to partner along in that. So, is that good?
Yeah, I think so. Any quick questions?
Yeah, questions or things we can talk about?
Fine. Big project. Yeah, I think, you know, one of the things that is stressed is The Grove is not about recruiting the New Heights. It's a space separate for everybody, so.
Church members are going to have to go through some change with that.
Yeah.
Some of the membership.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Have any plans for the church space now here when this happens?
Yeah, so we have two properties that New Heights owns right now. One of them is the one on Highway fourteen, and so that was where we were going to build and is no longer, obviously we're no longer building. So, that property is officially posted and up for sale. It's also in the middle of both communities, so we'd love for both, depending on what happens in both spaces, to be benefiting our community and things that would be essential for our region. So, that's on the market, it's open. Our building here is not yet posted, but we've been in some conversations with local organizations that are interested and excited about what that potential could be. As an official capacity, no posting has been made, but we've talked with the Realtor about that property as well. So, those steps are being made, but as a congregation, we also have a different process in terms of how we can officially make steps. So, leadership's on that route, the congregation's on the way. And so, I think we're in a space being really open to whatever kind of comes forward, and we'll be making moves on that in the coming weeks hopefully.
Do you have an appraisal on it?
What?
You have an appraisal on that property?
We do.
We did back when, we actually put it up for sale when it was at probably. Yeah, the, and I think at that point it went for sale around four hundred thousand dollars or something along those lines. So, I don't think we're doing a new appraisal. I don't know if that was the plan, I'm not sure. But because you, like you said, a big project, the grants will be helpful, selling of the two properties will be that significantly helpful, but just it'll help us with the opening some of the ministries or programs.
The Realtor has suggested a price for listing at this time. I don't honestly know if I'm allowed to share it with you. Because honestly, the vision team is talking about, we met a Realtor last week, the vision team's discussing it this week, but I'd rather not share until they've heard that as well.
That's fine, that's fair.
But those are, that is in progress, and we will have numbers in the coming time.
Awesome, thank you. Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
And we'll be watching you.
Thank you so much. Bless you.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, discussion action, library needs assessment presented by Bailey. Bailey, you have it.
Ready for me to share a screen?
Yep, I am sharing my screen now. Okay. Thank you, Nina. Okay. So, this is another like big picture conversation, so I'm sorry for so much big picture, but this is just a presentation about our space needs and service priorities. In your board packet, you have an ADA evaluation and three space needs assessments that we had conducted. All of those happened in April. But I'm going to kind of go through that and kind of what that means for us. Because if you had a chance to review it, you'll notice that we're seeing that our space needs are a lot greater than what we currently have. And I would love to explain more of what that would look like, so. So, right now, the library currently occupies two thousand five hundred and sixty square feet in the Black Earth Municipal Building, and the Black Earth Municipal Building was built in nineteen ninety. Since then, we've definitely expanded our physical collections, we've offered more robust programming, we've increased our computer access, and our staff has nearly quintupled since then. But don't take my word for it. I am truly a stereotype of my profession, so I did a bunch of research before I did this presentation. And I had the Wisconsin Historical Society dig up our annual report from nineteen ninety when the library was built. And in terms of employees, we had two in nineteen ninety for a total of point seven FTE, which means that not even the director was the full-time position at that time. And fast forward to 2021, we had eight employees at the end of the year for three point one FTE, and since then, we've actually added two more employees. So, we have ten employees for three point three FTE. In terms of collections, we had nearly twelve thousand books, five hundred and eighty-two audio materials, so that would be things like books on tape, seven video materials, and public use computers weren't even counted in nineteen ninety. And in 2021, we had over sixteen thousand books, over seventeen hundred audio materials, over three thousand video materials, and four public use computers, and that's without reintroducing all of the public use computers that we. So, that's not even all that we have, it's just all that we have right now. And in terms of programs, we had three programs in nineteen ninety with a total of one hundred and twenty attendees. And in 2021, we had twenty-eight programs with four hundred and fifty-five attendees. And keep in mind that we weren't actually doing programming for most of 2021, so we've already exceeded that in 2022 with thirty-nine programs and four hundred and ninety-two attendees so far in 2022. So, now we're getting to the space needs assessment. The worksheets that you're seeing in your board packet were developed by the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, who worked with a team of library administrators to develop the space needs assessment workbook, which essentially means that you can just plug in numbers and it'll spit out a square footage that you need. But it's based on a formula, it's based on ADA requirements, as well as things like non-assignable space, which is. They're usually done every five years or when the library director or the board thinks necessary. In this case, it was purely kind of my project because I was just curious what it was that we would need going forward, because I know that this is going to be a years-long process, so I would rather get started rather than later. And South Central Library System provides space needs assessments for free. They actually have a dedicated staff person named Deb Hefner, and she is the building and design consultant for South Central Library System. So, she actually did three space needs assessments for us. And this was during a three-hour-long meeting where we talked about where we see the library services going in the future. And again, all of that is based on ADA requirements, programming space, staff space that's required, and collection space. So. So, in front of you, you have three space needs assessments. One of, they're all labeled in the upper right corner on the first page. So, the first one is Black Earth 2022 Today. So, that is without any expansion of services at all. So, that's purely at the level of service that we're at now. So, books, some programming. But even with that, and that's adding, if we were in our own space, so it would add a program room, and it would also add some staff space. And so, even with that, we're estimated to need nearly four thousand more square feet. And with expanded services today, so that's the next space needs assessment, it's labeled Black Earth 2022. If we were to increase services, like adding study rooms and more spaces for community members to gather, we would need closer to eleven thousand six hundred square feet. And that would be to make sure that we're accessible as well. And using population projections from the Department of Administration, we were also able to project how much space we would need in 2040, and that would be thirteen thousand seven hundred and seventeen square feet. So, obviously, the conclusion from this, I guess, is that I don't think it's a simple library, it's pretty cramped where we're at now, but I think it's nice to have some numbers to put on that. And I know you might be asking what expanded services look like. We are pretty limited in the services that we can offer because of our lack of space. Space is a constant consideration for us as we're thinking of fun new things that we could do. And the role of the libraries and their, of libraries and their communities has changed so much since nineteen ninety. And I'll talk a lot about the concept of a twenty-first century library, but that's really just saying, you know, having space for community members to gather and for teens to spend time and really providing robust, community-centered programming, study rooms, you know, the kinds of things that modern libraries are expected to provide in their community. There are different tiers of service. Right now, we're at a tier one. There are actually three tiers of service, but I won't even get into tier three. But tier one provides the bare minimum of library services, and that's about where we're at right now. So, providing access to collection, some programming, some technology access. And tier two is providing services beyond the bare minimum, and that's where we're hoping to go. So, including community spaces, more robust programming, access to technology beyond the basics, so more than just access to a computer, but, you know, having maker spaces and more technology that people can use, and other community services as well. So, specifically for us, increased services would mean increased programming, and that would be responsive to what the community needs. So, right now, since we don't have our own space to do the programming, you know, we have to kind of coordinate a lot of schedules, and if we had our own space to plan our programs and conduct our programs, then we would have a lot more flexibility with the amount of programming we could do and also when we could do it. Number two is technology access, so we could add computers as well as comfortable spaces and seating for our patrons to bring their own devices and use our Wi-Fi, because that's something that we're seeing with patron technology usage right now, is that a lot of people are bringing their own devices into the library to use our Wi-Fi.
They could bring their Meta goggles.
Yeah, they want it.
Okay.
Yeah, but rather than, right now, we don't have very much reader seating and like comfy seating where people want to sit and stay for a while, so that's not super feasible in the space as it is now. It also means gathering spaces, so offering spaces where folks can go to conduct a meeting or, you know, have their own programs. It wouldn't just be our programs, it would be in these spaces, it would be other books that would be able to come in and teach classes and things like that. And especially in our community where spaces like that are very few, I think that'd be a really valuable resource in Black Earth. There's also quiet study and reading areas, because in any place where you're letting children in, there's going to be noise, but sometimes you do just need like a quiet space to read or to study, but that's not something that we can currently offer because there's no place to get away from the noise. So, being able to offer something like that means that we'd be able to give people what they need from the library. We would also be able to increase our collections, and we would also be able to increase our staff space, which would in turn increase our efficiency. Our staff has grown quite a bit since nineteen ninety. Our current staff, staff space was built for two people, but currently we have a staff of ten people. And that really limits our effectiveness as a staff, because that means we can't all get together in the space, and it also limits my effectiveness as a manager, because I don't have a private space to go to have conversations about performance or to do annual reviews, or even places to conduct meetings from the library space. So, a lot of times when I'm doing meetings, I'm doing them from home, which is kind of the saving grace of the Zoom era, I guess. And then lastly, maker spaces and team services. So, we want to be able to welcome teams into our space, which again is not something we can do in our space currently, because they don't really have a space that's just for them, which is something that teams really need to feel comfortable. So, we want to be able to offer them things to do while they're there, and again, like that's not something that we can do right now. So, that's kind of what expanded services looks like for us.
What is a maker space?
A maker space is like, think of like a craft cart or something. So, you'd have craft plywood, and they could kind of tinker with things. And I also included the accessibility assessment in your packet as well. It should be the first page. So, I also had Deb from SPLS perform an ADA assessment on our space, and at the time of the assessment, we had not reintroduced all of the furniture that we currently have in storage that we took away in 2021 due to the pandemic. So, as inaccessible as the assessment says we are, we are more accessible than we used to be. So, that's something to keep in mind. But the bottom line is that our space is not very accessible right now. For, as an example, around corners, somebody in a wheelchair needs a five-foot turn radius in order to be able to turn around and go back down the aisle. None of our shelving has that. So, if somebody were in a wheelchair, they would have to go down the aisle until the point that they wanted to come back, and then they would have to back up all the way down the aisle. So, it's not a very accessible space, and that's mostly because ADA has changed so much since nineteen ninety and disability has changed so much. Even if you think of a wheelchair from nineteen ninety, very different from a wheelchair from twenty twenty. Some of these things we can address right away, and we have addressed. So, as an example, under children's area number three, it says the wall shelf is not connected to the wall. We actually had public works come in and anchor those shelves to the wall for us, which was great, we really appreciated it. And then there are some other things that we're planning to address. So, the children's computer station is, we're planning to move that to a more accessible place, and then the door handles are also something we have a plan to address. Unfortunately, a lot of the issues can't be addressed without adding square footage to the library, because, you know, as much, there's only so much space. So, if I add space somewhere, I have to take it away from somewhere else. So, our next steps are kind of thinking about viable sites. Since obviously the need for the space is so prevalent, we'll be talking about and looking at some viable sites for our library space, primarily renovation opportunities, so because that will be so much more cost-effective for us than a new build. And then we'll also need to do some feasibility, get community input, and put together a capital improvement plan. All of that to say, we know it's not as simple as buying a space and moving in. There's a lot of considerations for us to make, and it's something that we want to make sure everybody is involved in from the start. So, again, this is not something that the library board is, or I, are taking lightly, and we know it'll be a years-long process to get to the amount of space that we need. But we're planning to include all major stakeholders along the way, including the Village Board, just to make sure that, you know, we have some open communication and we all know what's going on. Are there any questions? I'm sure there are some, but.
When you guys did the report, did they do any kind of budgeting reports? Like how much did we cost to fix some of this stuff, or do you?
They, they have.
How much square footage and stuff?
Yeah, so they have some calculators that'll give you, like you plug in a square footage number and it'll give you like an estimate, but that's purely for the build. So, when I plugged our square footage numbers into that for the eleven thousand, I want to say it was one and a half million, which is a big number. We are looking at grant opportunities and other kind of fundraising opportunities as well. We would likely have some kind of an ask from the Village, but I'm not sure what that looks like yet. But, and again, like that would be just for a new build, it wouldn't be, you know, acquiring the land or anything like that.
So, my next question is, have you called some of the bigger libraries that are in this square footage kind of area and just seen what their operating budget costs? So that you would have a rough estimate, I mean, that would kind of be about the same?
I haven't. I would imagine that it would go up mostly because I think there's a question of staff safety with more square footage. So, right now, we often have staffs that are in the library by themselves, but if there's more square footage, that might not be as safe. So, that'll definitely be a consideration, but it's not something that I super heavily looked into yet, because we are very.
Would be interesting to know what, how much it costs to operate a library is going to be, decide as you want.
Maintenance cost.
See if that's even remotely possible, you know?
Yeah, yeah, and that's definitely a consideration, it's just not something I've looked into yet. This is all very preliminary, it's just kind of looking to the future.
If I may, Bailey did leave one thing out. We do have a very, very, very small teen area that's sort of identified as a place where teens can go, but she has organized what you call a teen advisory group. Can you just give them a little information about that group and what they provided today?
Yeah, so we have a teen advisory board. It's just a group of teen volunteers. They come in and they help us with programming, and it's also really helpful because they give us some good feedback on things like summer library program and what works and what doesn't work, what they're really excited about. And they also kind of talk to their friends about the programs that we have, and they bring people along and talk about it at school. So, as they, with their help, our teen programming has really boomed, which is something that we want to lean into, especially since I know teen spaces and teen services are something that this community is really hungry for.
Questions, comments, thoughts? So, as you're doing the, so if you went to like seat three in your, are you taking into consideration that as we're looking at 2040, the actual book is going to change? You know, now you can get a book from the library on your tablet, and that's only going to, I think, become more prominent, more, you know, people are more like that. Me personally, I like to have a book in my hand, however. Does that change your need? Have you addressed that in your calculations? Has, I mean, does the program itself change that, you know, the books, are you going to be able to have so many more books because they're? Are you going to be able to have so many more books because they're going to be online?
Yeah, well, I would say too that I don't know that our collection size has reduced really since the kind of introduction of digital books. I would say that it's mostly stayed pretty steady. People do use digital books as well as physical books, but I would say that people still use physical books.
Do you see that changing a lot in the next, as a whole?
There's a little love affair between a novel and a hard copy and a newspaper.
But I don't think the kids, the ones, the teens now don't have that same love affair. They'd rather have it on their tablet.
I don't know that that's true. But I, I hear from a lot of teens that they really prefer the physical books as opposed to ebook. But I also don't see those things as competition.
Right, no, I'm just saying that they've been changing the thought process for their faith.
But I will say that those were considerations that were made for kind of our, our calculations of what our collection space would need to be. But I don't, I don't think that the physical book is going to go away in the library space.
All right, anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck putting a rope around all of it. Good luck putting a rope around all of it.
All right, discussion action on ARPA funds use.
You have this up on the agenda because this is carryover from parks and public work. So anyone, most committees want to talk about this?
And the A E Ds were brought up. And Mr. Jeter, do you want to take this?
Uh, go ahead, you're there, you're present, go for it.
A E Ds were brought up in parks as something that would be necessary for our community park and for Veterans Park. We've done some investigative work on it and could be about four thousand dollars per park, not quite that much. So I would, I would entertain a motion, or I will make a motion for Veterans and Community Park, as recommended by Parks Committee, to purchase two A E Ds not to exceed eight thousand dollars for our village parks.
Using ARPA funding.
Using ARPA funding.
I'll second that.
All right, let's talk about it. Concerns, vandalism?
We looked into, uh, we looked into the boxes. There is that potential. There's always potential with vandalism. So we've looked into casings, we've looked into visibility and signage and things like that that we could put up to deter, might not prevent, but it'll be a deterrent. Whether it be a camera, whether it be a sign.
Alarm boxes.
Alarm boxes, could be anything like that, so.
But I think we should know that before we spend the money on it.
Yeah, I believe the boxes we're looking at came with like some marine type siren that was supposed to be very ear piercing when the door opens. And I, I believe it came with a key. So if like a medical personnel actually opens it, that siren doesn't go off. But if somebody, you know, teenager or somebody at a baseball game opens it up, then that siren would go off.
Also goes off if you need it.
Yeah, so it's kind of one of those things, like if a medical person isn't there opening it, then you probably need help. And so that siren's also there to alert, you know, neighbors and people in the, the park that something's going on. And then the casing is the one that was brought up at least. And we'll do, before we make a final purchase and stuff, we'll do a little more investigating into it. But the one that was looked at was meant for cold, you know, to be outside in extreme weather. So it had a, a extreme low and an extreme high that it could operate in. And it was supposed to protect the battery so the battery wouldn't get degraded and over time and things of that nature. So we're kind of really kind of looking at, you know, one, the vandalism, you know, we want to put the, you know, believe people are going to do their best and, and not break things, but there's always that case. So short of putting a surveillance camera on there and watching it twenty-four seven, we're just going to have to go with the goodwill of humanity on it. You know, we could put trail cams up and stuff like that if we want to, but to what extreme do we want to go with that? But then we're also looking at, you know, the versatility of it being outside. It's going to be outside, it's going to be in the sun, it's going to be in rain, snow. It's going to be out there year round. Want to make sure that it's not going to be something that's just going to not work on us when we need it to the most. So that's, and I do believe that's why we're kind of looking at the higher end models because of all those additional features that are part of it.
About, what have you guys thought about testing and maintenance? Do we have to test and maintain these things regularly?
Yep, I believe there was.
We have our own.
Can't you do ours?
That's bad enough.
Yeah, that would be something we'll probably have to work with like, you know, Public Works with to get on a, a schedule or a maintenance like that. I believe they have a two year battery life on them, if I remember correctly. But yeah, that'll be part of the, the planning behind that getting, you know, before we get them put out there, we'll have a, a maintenance schedule and at, at least they kind of check up on it. Say that again.
What's all the replacement cost for that?
Batteries are hundreds of dollars.
Over two years.
And pads are only good for nine to twelve months from there.
From my person, from what I have heard on A E Ds, from talking and sitting in like several presentations from E N Ts, from what I've heard, the A E D is the single most important thing for a public space to have in terms of emergency medical, like, like being able to call and wait twenty minutes for an ambulance or what, or five minutes or whatever it is. Having an A E D to get a heart back into normal rhythm is the most critical thing. When, when I used to be a well driller, we had a guy come in and he said the single most thing, you know, Band-Aids, that's great, gauze, that's great, but if you can get an A E D on your drill rig. Because he, we were in a room of a thousand. He was like, one of you is going to have a heart attack on a rig. And sure enough, the next year, one came back and said, had a heart attack on a rig thirty miles from anywhere. Saved his life. So it's cost.
For a person that has a lot of experience with A E Ds and the maintenance of them and the, they're very valuable. I'm not sure in a park setting, and that hasn't convinced me. But you got to also remember that every squad car has one, fire trucks have them, ambulance. I mean, there's one usually close by. So is it worth the buy? And it might be, I mean, it saves one life, it's worth it. But and then you got to have a trained person using it. You can't just grab an A E D and throw it on somebody.
Well, generally speaking, if you're going to be out at a, at a park like that, you're going to find someone.
You would think.
In that crowd.
And they designed them pretty much to be, I mean, like, you can't do it wrong now, right?
You can place the pads wrong.
You can place the pads wrong, but it won't let you do damage. But like, it, they sense that the pads are on wrong, right?
Well, not really.
You got to make sure that the one you get knows that, that will save. Yeah, and there are some that, that are dummy, dummy proof. You know, that will say, okay, this is what you do. And, and those, like, if you're going to get them, I would say, I agree that you go high end and you get that talk through.
I should be in spearheaded by the rig. This was brought up by Megan and she's been the one to do all the investigation and bring.
And she's a nurse.
It's R N.
I think it's a good idea, but if we have any damage or stuff to it, that the person is responsible for the costs. You know, I don't want none of this, oh, we'll go to court if they damage it. It needs to be paid for.
You haven't kept that person.
Yeah, so here would be my suggestion. You keep it inside the building. So granted, there may be some events where.
The doors open.
Not, nothing, that's not open, you know, you have a graduation party and they're not open. However, the majority of the time that you're going to want it is when there is something going on, when there are a bunch of people there, you know? So I would say that you would need to keep them inside the concession stands at either building or inside of the storage at this, at Veterans. But I guess I want. I mean, are we, I agree that A E D should be there. I'm going to say that right out, but now that I'm wondering, are we just trying to spend the ARPA funds, to spend the ARPA funds or is this?
If that only buys it. The ARPA fund will only buy it. We have to maintain it afterwards.
Yeah.
That's not huge, but it adds up over time.
But if, if we want to talk about the funds. So the parks, I'll just, I'll just say this, that if, if this motion doesn't go through, then it's going to come back to parks and we'll find it in the parks budget to get them. We know that there's ARPA money out there and it's, it's meant for outdoor recreational usage. And we thought this would be a good fit for that because our budget for parks is pretty tight as it is. And there's a lot of things that we want to do coming up. So we're looking for other opportunities that didn't require us to put it onto the budget directly. So that's why we were bringing it to the village board, asking for ARPA money. Your, the reservations about having it outside, I'm right there with you. We, we talked about those things, you know, and we, we brought up, well, why don't we keep it in the concession stand? I agree with that. I think it should be in the concession stand except for the concession stand isn't always open. So what if there's grandparents down there playing with their grandkids on a Sunday and grandpa has a heart attack and now, you know, now they can't get to the A E D because it's behind a locked door that nobody has a key for. Yeah, so it's, it's, you know, kind of weighing the pros against the odds and, or the cons, you know? And it's, yeah, it's potentially up to a four thousand dollar device that could potentially get broken. And if it does get broken, I do think that we should follow the right course for that replacement, whatever that is. But at the same time, justifying, you know, somebody's life, four grand for somebody's life, I think I, I would rather take my chances with somebody's life and, and, and again, put my faith towards goodwill and all that and hope that people realize that, you know, this isn't a toy, that you shouldn't play with it. I mean, it's, I, I kind of, in my mind, I equated it to the fire, fire alarm, right? You always got that joker in the building or school or whatever that's going to pull that fire alarm because they think it's funny. But for every one person that pulls it, how many hundreds of thousands of other people out there don't do it? So you're, you're playing that odds, right? You're always kind of playing that odds game. And so that's kind of why I, I, I agree, I want the A E Ds and they're expensive. And that's keeping them outside, the security of it really kind of bugs me because I don't really have a good answer for that. And it, it just kind of has to go back to that, you know, we have to put our faith in humanity that they're going to do the right thing and not, not mess with a medical device.
I, I agree, you can't, you can't not do something because you think that somebody will break the law and do something wrong. I would agree with that. As far as storing it outside, was there any consideration of using it, mounting it to a wall somewhere in the sheltered area on the outside of the concession stand where you could potentially put like, in the winter, we do, you know, we put electric heat, electric heat tape on water lines so they don't freeze or sewers and gutters. Could you do something like that where it's a little thermistor on the outside or, you know, heat source that just wraps around that? And that way it keeps it from being negative twenty and it ends up being twenty around that thing.
How much activity happens in a park in the winter time anyway?
What about snowmobiles coming through?
Yeah, there are.
So yeah, so location, location wise, we've definitely talked about, you know, we want to put it centrally. The concession stand seems to kind of be right in the middle of the two fields there. The bathroom slash wellhouse is kind of the ideal location for Veterans Park. And then as I said earlier, the, the box we're looking at getting is supposed to be a kind of extreme weatherproof thing that's supposed to go down to negative so high and over a hundred something. I don't have the specs for it, but the weatherproofing in general is definitely on the topic and will be consideration for location, purchase, all of that.
Have you guys talked to, have you guys talked to E M S to make sure they're compatible with our machines?
Yep, so I've talked with E M S. They basically said, you know, we can, we're good to go with whatever direction we want to go. We can, we can go through E M S and they can help us make a purchase. They've done so for like the Mesa Library and I think the, the swimming pool, they've kind of made the purchase for them. But I don't think there was any kind of deals or grants or anything. It was just them doing the purchase so somebody else didn't have to do it on their behalf.
I guess, I guess my point was, you want to buy one that they can put right into a tube.
Hmm, okay, I see what you're saying.
If there's one, if you want one at Vets Park, can you just put a sign and have a, have, move ours into the hallway where it's always open?
Well, there's one here, right?
Yeah, but it's not in the entryway. If we put it in the entryway, they could always get in. And it would stay warm and it would.
It's a possibility, yeah. It's a little bit longer, somebody would have to run or whatever, but yeah, it's a possibility.
Someone has to put one on its ball diamond, but.
Yeah.
So it kind of sounds like everybody's favor, but it's a good use of ARPA funds though. I mean, you've got, you've got a lot coming up for ARPA funds, right?
I just want to make sure they get ventilized, they get covered.
So you're, you're saying that it should not exceed eight thousand just for the equipment, that's not including the boxes?
That's everything. Four thousand. So it'd be four thousand for each unit, including the boxes that they come with.
Iron box?
Iron box?
Yep, yes.
And how much of the ARPA fund are you saying?
Hundred and forty thousand.
And aren't we, weren't, weren't we also looking at a Jeter?
Well, as you said, they're sixteen thousand for rental and. Jeter is going a long way towards a purchase, Jeter's coming up.
Yeah.
Yep, that's next.
Yeah, the rental.
I guess, I, I also, I didn't realize, it's a good point you made Mitch, that all the squad cars have, have them in as well.
Fire truck squad cars, ambulance.
Our police are right here.
Not always.
Not always. So how, so how, but when there's an event going on at the park, there is usually a police officer.
Well, you don't know that. I mean, now there is a vet.
You know, where, where it comes really valuable is, is in a small community like this, you've got a response time, right? So if, if a person goes down in the park and they paged, you're going to get fire and E M S. They're going to be pretty fast, but it could be like three, four minutes.
But if it's in the hallway.
That could actually, if some, if he goes down and people didn't realize, so a lot of times somebody goes down, they're agonal breathing, they think they're breathing, they're on the phone with nine one one. They're like, this person's breathing, well, they're really not, right? So if that goes by for two or three minutes and then it takes three or four minutes to respond, now they're brain, or brain damage. So that's where an A E D becomes valuable. If you can get on it right away and shock them, you have a chance of preventing that.
So when you say that about the A E D and people knowing how to use it, Pulse Point, and I'm part of it, Pulse Point has a, an A E D trained alert. So if there's an A E D event, anybody that is signed up for this is trained to use A E, I, A E Ds, then they will, it'll alert me and say, there is this event in your area, can you go? You know, so it would be, it would be beneficial to have one at C A D Park.
But the, the probably Pulse Point is the same point, that doesn't go off until an ambulance paged, it's the same.
Right, there's that, yeah.
The closer and faster, the better. The question, my, my question is.
Somebody tests how fast they can run to the park and back.
Well, that won't be me. They work. Question is, are we going to use ARPA funds for it? It, it's, it's a good use for it, yeah.
How are we going to get that, Jeter?
That's my concern.
So is Parks paying the after fee, so is it going to come out of Parks' maintenance fee? Or where, where is it going to come out?
Maintenance would come out of Parks.
I kind of like James's idea of moving the one that didn't hear into a public space. I mean, it's a hundred yards to the water, to the building that's at Veterans Park.
Yeah, but they won't even know there's an A E D unless you're assigned.
Well, you would have to sign, you put, you put three hundred dollars worth of signs up. It's one less A E D to maintain every two years. It's as close. I think you need one at Community Park.
I think Go Legion has some of our groups and people would jump all over helping us get these.
That's true too.
Is that grant still available if we were going to look at getting one? I agree that there definitely has to be one out of Community Park. And that's been stated over and over. I kind of agree with moving this one with more signage. What are we looking at here?
Well, I, do we, do we go ahead and approve it and then recommend that they go find? watchers, but approve the amount just in case they don't? You don't want to wait too long, summer will be over. I'm not doing my motion to that.
Does anyone know if we ordered one, how long it would take?
Well, personally, I'd make the most, I would say, hey, you approve the amount and say, hey, go check. I mean, to not check would be just silly. I wasn't asking for a minute.
We've gotten price quotes on a couple, I don't have those offhand, so I can't speak to them. But I don't believe we've gotten time of delivery on anything we've, if we placed an order. We don't, we don't have that information at hand.
I think we've had some on order for about six months at least, probably nine months actually, specifically to the EMS.
Essentially, come next spring.
But it probably won't happen.
Well.
Well, safer than that.
It's closer than where we were two days ago when they were even asking, you know, for it, so.
Any more discussion? We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Carrie's.
Thank you.
All right, next one, ARPA fund sewer jetter, $16,000.
How much is a sewer jetter? In total?
Yeah, how, how much is a?
Well, $16,000 would be a net payment. How much does a jetter cost?
Hey, I'm on here, guys, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hey, so jetters, depending upon what style we want, range from about 65 to we could easily hit 300,000 for something. I've got a demo coming, was supposed to be today, it's coming Thursday now. And I talked to another company, so that's about 80,000, so yeah. We got, name your price, it's just what you want that machine to do. You want it just to clean sewer lines, you want it to clean storm sewer, suck, suck holes, I mean, there's a lot of different options out there.
If you want what you needed to do without being a Cadillac, how much?
Well, if it's just cleaning the sewer lines, it's probably going to be about 80, $90,000. Now, if we wanted to stuck out the storm catch basins, clean storm sewer lines, you could probably get a used vacuum truck sewer jetter for maybe that 120, 150,000, that's used. Mind you, we also. What's that?
Is it still going to jet, this is going to jet the jetter?
Oh, yeah, a jetter's, just a jetter trailer like we have is kind of old technology. I mean, more municipalities are getting away from that and getting the truck vacuum combo just because it's more usability, user friendly, where you can use it to clean out storm drains, use it to jet sewers, you can suck any material that's in the sewer lines, you can suck it out versus having it bucket it out. So, I mean, there's, there's many different options. I know with.
Mind everybody, we did no jetting last year.
Yes.
And we haven't done it this year.
So with.
So we are behind the eight ball.
With the, with the rental that I had looked at reserving, it was about 3,500 a week or 15, 16,000 for a month. We wouldn't have to necessarily rent it for a month at a time, we could break that up. And that would actually be the truck vacuum combo, that's the only thing I can rent, I can't actually rent a trailer.
You demo new ones all the time instead of renting them?
I can sure, I can sure try to.
How many suppliers are there that we can work?
I gotta tell you, I think it's crazy to put 16,000 rental towards.
Yeah, no.
The, the thought on, the thought on the rental, as I recall, was that yes, it would be great to put 16,000 to a down payment. However, these units are probably 18 months out if we were to do that. And something needs to be done before we get to 18 months. Because you get a line plug or something like that and it's not maintained over 18 months, you've taken an easy problem and you've backed it up and made a massive problem.
And didn't you just say, Mr. Pet?
So, the one guy I talked to today said it was.
We have to do this, I think.
So I would make a motion to approve the 16,000 for the rental, up to 16,000 for the rental and take the rest of the ARPA funds and put it towards the purchase.
Then why would you?
Of a, um, truck combo. Matt, don't go Cadillac on us and then we'll, whatever the difference is, we'd probably have to work to come out of Public Works Fund.
Why are we using the sewer equipment replacement fund for something like this instead of ARPA fund?
How much is in there?
Yeah, over 32,000.
I think we do that for the rental and then put the other ARPA money towards, wait, what are we saying?
Why are we paying for rentals?
Well, what we're saying is, not going to get a truck in time.
Because we can't get a new one for 18 months.
We have a jetter.
It's right. 75 years old.
It, it is, but it, it still works, right?
Matt?
Like if you had something happen, it, it would work until we get a truck, right?
The last couple of times we used our jetter on emergency stuff, it barely got the job done, so.
But it got it done, yes.
It, it got it done, but it was a fight and it was a worry of, is this going to work or not? It's there, it's in the shop.
Overtime did, was incurred.
It's, what's up?
How much overtime was incurred due to it taking three times longer than necessary? And was there, is there a risk with old equipment like that with pressurized hoses exploding in people's faces?
Uh, the hose was replaced, uh, probably three, four years ago. It's just the fact of, yeah, it just doesn't have the pressure anymore to really get the job done type thing. So it, it's tired, I mean, it's wore out.
And nobody's saying that it's not wore out, but it, it would carry us through an emergency if we had one before the truck.
Yes.
Well, actually, another problem is, it's, it's been two years, there's other, you've got to get some jetter done.
Why has it been two years? We didn't know, I mean, don't they, or so we're supposed to have to be jetted every year, doesn't it?
You need to.
Should be.
You need to get some jetting done.
So this sewer jetter's been due for replacement, gosh, since I was here before 2016. And it's just been a fight, Tony fought it, Brian fought it, and just nobody ever wanted to put the money into it. Brian and Tony had found replacements to replace this machine and we just never had the money for it. So what happens is it just keeps falling down and down the hole. And here we are sitting, you know, in a bind now, so yeah, Shelley brought up the point, we do have sewer money, or sorry, sewer equipment money, 30,000. We sold a truck and a lawnmower last year, that's about 32,000 sitting in reserve. And I think there's another 30,000 sitting somewhere, I think we had about $90,000 kind of figured for this already, didn't we Shelley?
So you have 60,000 in the, between the sale of the truck and the repair fund? And then 90,000 that was set aside for?
No, 90,000.
Nope, nope.
Total, okay.
Yeah, 90,000 total, yes, yes.
Be a disclaimer, but there is a motion without a second on your table.
Uh, you didn't finish your motion though, did you?
No, I didn't finish it, sorry. Sorry, that's. So at this point, I guess I would amend or back up my first motion and, and make a motion.
But you didn't have a motion, you just start over.
No, just make a motion, yeah, just start over, okay. I'm going to say that I would make a motion to not allow the 16,000 to come out of ARPA, to have the 16,000 come out of the repair fund and ha, and rent the jetter and then take the rest of the, whatever the ARPA money is and put it towards getting that new or new used vehicle jetter all in one vacuum thing.
Okay. I'll second it, now let's have the discussion.
Now we can, okay.
So can I throw something out?
Yeah.
Just recently, Lodi, I'm going to bring the city of Lodi out, they are in the process of getting their new jetter, but they went into partnership with Hoynet and Wannakee, so each of the communities is sharing in the expense of it and it's a really expensive truck, according to the article. Have we considered the possibility of purchasing that new jetter in partnership with, say, Maisel to help with the cost?
We'd not, but we could certainly look at it.
I mean, could, for 16 grand, can we, if we had an emergency, couldn't we get Cross Plains to come in and do it? And pay them a little bit?
Yeah, if we have some type of.
16,000 to get something, it's so stupid when you're going to buy one. This doesn't make sense.
Right, so.
We don't have, I mean.
I disagree with the length of time that it's been since.
It's been too long.
But that's our fault.
We're, it is our fault, but now we have to fix it.
But if not an emergency, if we have an emergency, we can have somebody come in and help us.
Matt, is it possible or not?
Okay, hold on, sorry, I'm dealing with the delay and the stuff here. Yes, if there is some type of emergency, I would not hesitate, if ours couldn't get the job done, to call Cross Plains, to call Maisel, McGann's, there is places out there you could call, absolutely. But then you're kind of waiting on them, whether or not they're a half hour response time, an hour, two hours, you're kind of at their mercy. But yes, James is correct, absolutely, if we have an emergency, you can call other municipalities, you know, Mount Horbstock, anyone's willing to lend a hand, it would just kind of be like Sean has with other electrical utilities, everyone's willing to help each other out.
And that's, that's also though, Matt, I mean, I remember we discussed this a little, that possibility at Public Works was that, yes, you could just call in an emergency, but you're only going to deal with one portion, one bit of the line. Would the emergency, this rental would suffice, it would allow, allow your staff the time to do how much of the village and help get us back on track for, on schedule with the maintenance that needs to be done.
We can't keep deferring maintenance. Just can't.
They did it, six months, they did half the village, or the next year they did the other half of the village. I mean, we're talking maybe a year, maybe a year and a half before we get the truck, but then we'd be done.
Is there usually, if you're looking used, are they out there, rebuilt?
Uh, yes, actually, like Shelley was just describing, Wannakee's truck just sold for 160,000 on surplus. And that 18 month timeline, I don't know where that's coming from, I don't have that. I talked to somebody about a trailer unit today and he basically told me to buy the machine, it would be here eight weeks. If we didn't like it, he'd buy it back from us. I didn't feel comfortable with that, but that's what he was trying to make a sale on. So there are used trucks out there, it's just getting, like I said, making sure they're going through what type of financing we can get. Is there going to be any type of warranty with it, you know, going through the condition? I know Middleton's is coming up for sale, that one's probably going to be a little bit out of price range. I know the one they're buying brand new is about 500,000, but yes, there is used trucks out there, it's just with a used one, you might have to wait for a good one type thing. I had one located in Illinois, that was this spring for 125,000 and that one got away from us.
What's the life expectancy on these trucks?
Just depends what you want to run, some people run them 10, 15 years, you know, if we're buying used, I would say seven years, depending upon how used you buy.
Okay.
How long, I guess, the only opinion we haven't heard is that the 16,000 is valuable enough to spend or not is you.
You there?
Yeah, you there?
Oh, sorry about that, what was the question?
I said, the only one that hasn't commented is the 16, if, if we're going to go ahead and buy something right away, is the 16,000 worth spending in addition to that, or is it better to put it towards a new one? Or a used one or whatever?
I would say if we can keep the 16,000 and use it for new purchase, that's probably going to be the best. I agree with the Public Works Committee, the maintenance does need to get done and we'll just see what we can get done with the machine that we have. If it's not looking like we can do it, we'll see, I know Cross Plains would be willing, we've had them come in to do some stuff in the past and just do troublesome spots as they come along.
Sewer utility along with the other funds we have set aside, you wouldn't have to find it.
Well, we got 132,000 in ARPA and 90,000 in.
Between Public Works Equipment stuff, between the truck sale, between the sewer equipment replacement fund and beyond that, your sewer fund is.
Just like it's a no brainer, am I, you want to amend your motion?
Well, I already said that I did not want to use the public, the 16,000 from ARPA.
Okay.
I wanted to totally put that ARPA funds into that jetter.
Yeah.
So I will amend then to not take the 16,000 out of the, um, fund that we're discussing and just go after, put that towards getting that, that jetter replaced, the truck vacuum jetter replaced. Did that make sense?
How much of the ARPA funds you wanted to use then?
Up to the full 132 that's left, up to. But I would leave that to Matt. He knows what we're supposed to be doing, what he, you know.
Well, I think Public Works has to say.
I think Public Works has to go, it has to go back to Public Works and they have to say.
How much jetting are we going to get done this year?
Yeah.
We'll get while we can.
So just to clarify on the, the budget side of it is, are we using the, the 90,000 and then supplementing ARPA? Are we using ARPA and supplementing the 90,000?
I think we should use ARPA and supplement with the 90,000 because you don't, we all have, we also have other trucks that might have a problem at some point, we need to keep some in that repair fund. You know, that's my thoughts, we need to keep some money in that repair fund.
Okay.
So I would take the, I think the ARPA fund money, it's not free money, but it is money that we didn't know we had.
Everybody else on the list that wanted ARPA stuff doesn't get it?
Well, you're probably right, but you know, we, we're trying to think that that's probably possible anyways. Because this really needs to get done.
The Cooper property was tax-free using ARPA funds too.
So it's in the digits, right?
And we, we used the ARPA funds in the grant we wrote for Noel Nelson as a map. Use all of it towards us, that takes that away, I don't know what that would be.
So now that we're getting closer and closer to budgeting, as each committee's doing their budget, can they kind of figure on a little bit, okay? I'm trying to figure out how we can budget some of the ARPA funds or allocate some of the ARPA funds for each committee with their budgets. I mean, Public Works would and probably could use most of it, but yes, I agree Shelley, how are we going to tear Cooper's house down or how are we going to clean that property up? You know, the ball field's got to get completely revamped. I mean, I think in our sewer, our sewer account, what do we got, like 400,000 in cash or? I don't have my notes in front of me or the.
How much we got in sewer?
About 70,000, 60,000, 70,000 each.
In sewer more than that.
Sewer equipment replacement fund is that 130,000. Truck sale, we had over 30,000.
Okay, so you're roughly at 65, would you say, ish? Okay.
And the maw?
And then 30 or something.
What was the maw?
Maw sale.
That was in the truck and.
That's in the truck.
But there was 90,000.
Yeah, we were, there were Public Works Equipment.
Okay. We'd rather not touch.
That's the portion that.
But if we did, so if we have 60 from that and 60 from ARPA or 70 or whatever, 120, we're saying about 120 of the rest we should be able to. I mean, how much is he thinking it's spending? I'd say about 150,000.
That's what I'd.
I don't know.
That's what I'd have taken.
If you took half of what's left for the ARPA fund to park and the other half.
I think you're going to need it for.
Or if we left, or if we left 50 in parks.
So we have 132,000 left to divide up because we already took the 80s.
After the 80s.
After the 80s, so we have 132,000 to divide.
Say you take 50 for parks, because if that's a matching grant, right? I mean, it's not like we're going to be over 50, I mean, we're 50,000.
That grant was written for with over $200,000 worth of expenses. The grant itself could be up to 100,000. So we could use TIP funding, I use TIP funding as a source and ARPA fund as a source to help come up for the additional.
We'd have to come up with 100,000.
Kind of 200,000 expenses for granting.
Well, with everything that parks, why, I mean, it could be broken.
That'd be all the same thing.
Right.
It's that simple.
Yeah, that was a wish list for the parks too, you know, we were not expecting to get everything.
If that was ARPA, would we take care of the demolishment of?
Yep.
Yeah. So the only thing you're, you're. So, the only thing, your, your motion in my second does not include the pricing we're talking about.
Right, again, third town be the charm, right? Okay, so we want to amend my motions, deny the sixteen thousand to come from the ARPA funds. Then we wanna take the remaining a hundred and thirty-two thousand and split it equally between Public Works to buy the jetter, and parks to do whatever, at that point, right, cause Cooper's coming, the Cooper property is coming out, but there's other things in there also, so, does that cover it?
Um, well, yeah, that actually covers-
Right, so a hundred and thirty-two, a hundred and thirty-two thousand, split, divide, divided equally-
Yep, it covers what's on the agenda, the rest, they have to go back to Public Works.
Yeah, cause they should go back to, to Public Works to find the rest of the money, and then the rest should just go to parks, and they can figure out what they're doing.
I'll amend my second to yours, any more discussion?
We got the stuff.
Yep.
So, the motion's gonna be is not to use the sixteen thousand from ARPA for jetter, for rental. Split, ARPA funds remaining, fifty-fifty, parks and Public Works.
Yep, yeah. So, the rental's off altogether?
Rental's off altogether.
Okay.
And, oh, and that part of the motion is the half Public Works not towards that.
Yes, that was part of, yeah, so the fair half, their, Public Works, Work half would have to go towards the jetter.
Yeah. All right, any more discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Reposed, yep. All right, discussion action on refuse recycling, RFPs.
And we have our representatives from Palatieri here. Okay, so, um, as you know, we went out with an RFP, our garbage contract in recycling expires at the end of this year with Town and Country Sanitation. Um, the RFP asked for, um, the standard pickup weekly of garbage and recycling, as we currently do now, with an option one, a ninety-six gallon cart pickup, and option two is for a three, five, and seven year contract pricing. Two parties submitted their proposals, Town and Country Sanitation, our current provider, and Palatieri Waste System. Palatieri only provides cart pickup, they don't have a manual pickup that we can do now. Our current contract, uh, was a seven year contract, and the pricing that we have was for manual pickup. And garbage currently, that's seven fifty per household per month, with recyclables, that's three fifty per household per month, for a total of eleven dollars. Um, I broke down as fast as I could, uh, spreadsheet, the proposals that we received, and behind that, you can see the nuts and bolts of what you gave us. Considerations, and this will be, obviously, whoever you decide on, put some budget for the next year or whatever. But do we want to have manual pickup, or cart pickup? Make that decision, um, if it's manual, then Palatieri does. Or you can still work with both of those. And then recyclable, picked up weekly or every other week, cause both of them gave a price for weekly.
How do they do it now?
Weekly.
That's what I thought, okay.
Um, no, um, you know, I'm not a huge fan of Town and Country, you know, that, not hit that.
But that sucks, because Town and Country-
I know, you go, I know. Um, but, one thing they're really good at, that, uh, the other one doesn't do is picking up furniture free, if you call them.
Once, once per year, per house, right?
Yes.
Like kitchen counters do not count as oversized furniture, that is considered-
Do you try it?
Construction demolition.
You break them up and-
I tried it, yeah, no, if I would've saw them up, they would've taken it, I, I-
Everything that you, as long as you make it handy for them.
Yeah. I've got a buddy with a dumpster to construction, they just take it over there, and that works.
The one difference you'll notice on the cart pickup is that Town and Country's offered to supply the carts.
Yes.
We'd have to buy them from-
Palatieri has to buy, Palatieri is charging on the home orders.
What's included in your monthly rate? Additional carts are charged, but every own get set a cart as part of your standard piece.
Even-
Only take what you can fit in the cart.
You may as well call them, if I called you and said, guess what, I just moved out and my cart is overflowing, would you say tough?
No.
If I called you, I thought I read somewhere that if you call, it's-
Oh, we either say, you know, can you wait too much pickup, you can place additional bags outside the cart, let it come back off route. I mean, if you have that, you got options.
You just got paper pictures.
Well, I just thought, I thought that, I mean, they both do that.
No, no, Town and Country.
Except for Town and Country's will pick up what I already put up.
Yeah.
Well, first of all, do we want container pickup? I think we're gonna have to go there eventually.
Eventually, anyway, right? Mazel's already there.
We're talking long-term contracts.
If you don't have to, I wouldn't do it.
What do we have in place around, like-
Oh, no, at my house, no, never, don't, at my house, no, I know.
I think, I think my opinion on the dumpster, ninety-five gallon is gonna be very hard to predict how a community's gonna grow with the way interest rates are and building, and is that gonna slow? Or is it gonna continue on its normal trajectory? So, I would, if we were gonna continue on our normal trajectory, I would lean, lean towards the automated, the ninety-five gallon, you know, non-manual, but I personally see things slowing down. There's a good chance that we could probably, as a community, survive on manual pickups for another five to seven years before we get to a size that justifies it, but-
If we go on a three-year, doesn't really change that much, if we do a three-year with, um, Town and Country.
And you know, to add to that a little bit, we do have some elderly people that cannot manhandle those carts all through the street.
Yeah, and what do we got for like ordinances, you know, if we're asking people to put two ninety-five gallon carts in their garage or whatever, you know, people are gonna start putting those outside where they're visible, I know some communities have a ordinance where, you know, your garbage cans can't be visible from the street or stuff like that, do we have, have anything like that to worry about?
Wouldn't matter if we did. Wouldn't matter if we did.
No, because people still-
Yes, we do offer walk-up services for elderly or disabled. That's a concern, they just have to contact us, I mean, there's a waiver, our drivers are not technically supposed to get them, but we do have to get it for the waiver done.
Right.
The doctor has to sign up, but we do offer walk-ups.
Okay, thank you. That's why I came, I said, oh, I appreciate that, cause I was thinking, I was thinking of my ninety-year-old mother-in-law.
Yeah.
You know?
Especially if they're gonna come off, or just, you know, I don't anticipate any of the rest of our-
Right.
It's turned a lot of stuff.
I don't know if I'd go to seven years with Town and Country, but six years, there's a big jump between, there's been, there's a big jump between six and seven.
Town and Country was a three, a five, or a seven year option, Palatieri was five or a ten year. And each case, um, thereafter, it increased, uh, twenty-five, so.
Oh.
There wasn't a six-year option.
Oh, it just says year six, okay. Well, let's get this, I'd like to make a move to go to Town and Country for a seven-year contract. Weekly pickup on recyclables.
Go five, I'm on your side.
We did that last, we did that last time.
Did you just make a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, a second before this goes.
Town and Country manual pickup?
Yeah. With the week, weekly recycling.
Okay.
I thought you seconded it.
Do I amend that to five then? Okay, I'll amend it to a five-year contract.
They have a five-year mother-in-law?
Yeah. Sorry, trying to catch up on my notes. All right, any discussion?
Go comparing, trying to do some math in my head.
So, is this option two, five-year plan, and the chart, we're looking at the Town and Country chart? Yeah? Was that yes, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that?
Which option is it? Option two.
That'd be, oh, so, not the one pass, this one, right?
So, it's, uh, fifteen, twenty per home per month?
And then racks, and then progressive after.
What, what happens on any of these contracts if, for some reason, a com- a company can no longer provide on it? You know, something happens, or?
The contract, that, that happened to us when they wanted to raise the recycling.
That's the, of course, the one thing I'm concerned with, uh, Town and Country have tried to increase their raise, and we had a battle going back and forth with the contract. Um, they tried to increase, of course, with the gas pricing that has come out, a lot of recyclables. Argument with, in the village attorney. Do worry about that, especially with these longer-term contracts, wanna see us have to get into that battle for the village.
The two things that, cause I'm a waste guy, I was thinking, what happens if fuel doubles and stays doubled? And what happens when we still don't figure out how to deal with all our plastic recyclables, and it ends up costing instead of saving money? So, I wanna make sure that if we're locked in, we're actually locked in, and somebody can't back out of it, or just say, tough luck, we're gonna figure out how to just well, to our terms.
We went through that, so.
We have had several residents call and ask for the carts, made it clear that they would like them.
They can purchase them? I waited, mine, mine's going bad, so, I waited, we were gonna do it before it came.
It's definitely a, I'm sorry, I didn't try to-
Go ahead.
It's, it's a dying model, so, he's one of the only haulers I know in the area that's continuing to offer this.
Yep.
Um, the challenge is continuing to find drivers who are willing to-
That's what I was thinking, you continue to see them, you know, they're having troubles with their drivers.
Numerous times, uh, this for us, of course, it's like two, but-
But I really like to be able to put extra out all the time and not worry about-
Okay, but if you had the cart, I mean-
And it doesn't cost anymore. Nope. Look at the house, they were picking up ten bags at-
Well, especially at holidays, you always have ten bags. Brain, mine too.
All right, any more discussion?
Wasn't there, wasn't there a mention, wasn't there a mention of option that was every other week recycling?
Recycling-
There is, but that was horrible.
Okay.
That is an optional.
The motion was to, um, approve Town and Country manual with weekly recyclable pickup for five years.
Five years. Any more discussion?
What are, you know?
Recycles every other week anyways.
Comparing the five-year versus the five-year, so-
Basically, it's seventy cents difference for a five-year between them.
The only, the only benefit I'm seeing is doing the manual is being able to put out, not an infinite amount of waste, but a good chunk.
Yep, and the furniture pickup once.
And the furniture pickup once.
But, Palatieri, but-
Is that included?
I've gotten twice this year, never get charged.
I know, I was gonna say the all.
Is that specified in?
Yeah, it was, I read it.
It does say somewhere that it does call them.
Yep. And they do our village dumpster for free.
Yeah, Palatieri do our free dumpster.
They would do that too, me too, but-
All right, get it later, any more discussion?
Looking at the price, it looks the same, Palatieri automated.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Ready? Ooh, ah, that's it, I guess neither one passed. Um- Well, my move would bring it back next meeting. Yeah, I agree.
How much time do we have left on this contract?
Um, to the end of the year.
Oh.
But we would, you know why-
Let everybody get comfortable with it.
You know what, we need to add-
I would, would like to, yeah, I don't think that, my brain hasn't wrapped around the math enough yet, to say that seventy cents is actually worth-
Okay, so we would need, we would need to add- One part is if they're busy, they'll be surprised if it wasn't good for thirty days.
I also have heard a lot of people that say that they would rather have the tubs, so.
I would not.
I can't wait till they, till they switch, just telling them to go crazy.
Well, Mitch, it's probably because that tub is as tall as you, you can't get it to the curb.
All right, so, let's, uh, let's go ahead and, uh, table it till the next word.
Would you honor your pricing for an extra thirty days, just to make that happen?
I believe it still does.
Okay, no, I put it, I thought it had in there, uh, good for thirty days.
So, you mean it's still valid, but that wasn't a question?
Will you honor it till I'm bored? Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Perfect, thank you.
You do this, I mean, I-
Wait, I made a motion to table it till next week.
Oh, I'll second that.
Okay, any more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Still with, still with, all right, discussion action on electrical fund review, third party. I don't know if we have any names or anybody-
Okay, well, I, the only thing I really have is maybe more of just an update, because I did reach out to, uh, Baird Financial, and then also Baker Tilly, I have not heard back from Baker Tilly, but I did hear back from Baird, uh, again, they're similar to Ellers, that's a different firm. We have not worked with before. Uh, Kevin Mullin there is willing to take a look at our last two years, uh, in our reports, our expenditures, our revenues, um, our audits, at no charge, to see if he can see anything, um, that was, he's after concern. Uh, he does see all, just based on our conversation, that us not borrowing for capital projects could be a big part of that. Uh, the other thing that we did not discuss when we did meet at the special meeting, is, uh, I did mention that we were in the hole when I started, that, you know, the village was also ordered by the Public Service Commission to pay back Wisconsin High School District over three hundred and nine thousand dollars at that time as well, for faulty metering over two-year period. So, there's part of that is that, that was ordered before I was here in two thousand, I made the order, uh, right off the first.
Yeah.
It was-
That's long gone, so.
Yeah, yeah, but when you look at, one of the reasons why we were in the hole, that added to it, and-
Okay, so when you say that they're willing to look at our financials, and they're willing to look at the, um, audit, they're not gonna like take yours and take Vanguard's and compare accounts, because our accounts don't match up, are they, or they're gonna do?
No, they're not gonna do that, but the other thing that I will tell you is, Beth and I went over to the, to the Mazel today after that meeting, and we talked to them about their accounting and their budget for electric, their accounts don't match either, they don't match ours, they don't match Vanguard's. None of, none of us as three match any of the accounts, so.
Okay, but account numbers shouldn't matter, I'm sorry, account numbers shouldn't matter, they have the kind of-
You know what, but it was disgusting, you just brought it up, so I'm just giving you the update of what-
So, I want to know if they will look at each matching account number, whatever, well, they, they, so, I mean, that's what I wanna see, I wanna see, I want, I want to see a thorough, all back two years, and I'm not saying that you're wrong, Shelley, I'm saying-
No, I'm just giving you that.
I want-
I do a thorough, getting all. You just want somebody to do it for an all but, yeah.
Right, but if they're gonna do it for three, they're not doing it.
Hey, this is our revenue, our, our income, our expenses and our cash flow, we've got to be.
I'm, that's way right there.
Baker Tilly comes back with.
If Baker Tilly.
If they come back, they do it, they do it though, I know they do.
Yeah.
I talked to.
We use them at work, too.
Talked to Zach too, um, he's got a guy that used to work at Baker Tilly who works for, uh, Lapone Utilities now. He highly recommends, Zach used to do all of your guys' accounting, he's very, very good at what he does, um, but he, he's gonna talk to this guy and see if he's even willing to do it, um.
On the side, you mean, he does it?
Yep, yep, so.
Can we do that?
Zach, Zach's other friend.
As long as he has his own business, yes, I don't think we can.
He does.
Alright.
So I think we should. I make a motion to shove it until we get back.
Alright, that motion on the table.
I'm, I make a motion to, to.
Table?
Table this until we have numbers.
Uh, I'll second, but table it just till next meeting?
Yeah, yeah, because we should have me, we should have a.
I'm gonna amend it.
Yes, I'll amend it, so, table this till the next meeting.
I'll second, I'm gonna amend it, okay.
So, is it possible to get a breakdown of?
We gotta have motion, huh? Well, we're beyond that, but get, let's get through this.
I mean, I hate to get a breakdown, why we're seven hundred and fifty dollars?
Yeah, well, that's, that's what we're gonna.
We've done this before, so.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Discussion action on Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero six, adopting Dane County hazard, natural hazard mitigation plan two twenty twenty-two update.
Yes, okay, so you know that, um, we already approved our updated portion of our plan to this, we had to initiate it. We now have to adopt the county's entire plan.
Oh, holy shit.
So, I can certainly provide you a whole list of all of that, but we don't need to do that, this is in front of you, they wanted approved, of course, by the end of August, so.
First season.
So next quarter?
So we can't table it?
Um.
EMA came back.
It should go to emergency management.
Resolution?
Well, no, but to talk about if they want to do it, first.
The whole plan has been out for us to look at for a long time, it's just that they didn't do. I don't know.
I haven't, so if we don't adopt. I have not had time to look at it, so I'm not.
If we don't adopt the counties, we've got our own, we've worked on our own, right?
Yeah, but you've got to leave the money.
Yeah, I mean, a little dark portion of the plan already, they just want us to look at.
But is there anything Dane going out there to strangle us, if we sign on with the county?
What if you have a disaster?
If we don't have it approved by August, are you, are they gonna shoot us? I don't know, I, I didn't ask that.
No. They've been really pushing last-minute stuff lately, I don't know what their problem is.
Yeah, they, they have, so.
The state of Dane, no. I'm not going to, uh, do anything on it right now.
Zach, table it till next meeting?
Huh?
Cable till next meeting?
Want to, or just pass it over, it's up to you. Make a motion to table it, we can, otherwise I'm just gonna pass over. We can always bring it back up later if we have to.
I'd say pass it over unless we all plan to read it, if, if we all plan to read it, then we can table it, but if it's something we don't have any intention of actually reading, then we should pass it off to the committee that will.
Yeah, I, I think it should be reviewed by emergency management personally.
Mm-hmm.
Good idea to know what we're getting into.
Yep.
So, I have that question, so if we got flooded right now, would we be eligible for FEMA flooding, FEMA thing?
No, we still would, it's just, yeah.
So, do you want a motion to send it to emergency management?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to send it to emergency management so they can check it out.
Second.
That was for a second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Discussion action on renewing Dane County urban county consortium agreement for CDBG funding. This was the other thing they tried to beam through really bad. Um, we didn't make the deadline.
We didn't?
We did not make the deadline for, doesn't mean he still can join us. Um, the guy was really wishy-washy, he did come back with a few numbers, I'm trying to get some more information, but he's giving numbers.
So he didn't answer the question.
But.
So he didn't answer the question, that's what you're saying.
He didn't, and then he came back with numbers, but it seemed to be the same numbers he gave Marshall, who decided not to go with it. This was a, um, you, you weren't here, um, it's, uh.
If we.
Um, okay.
Trying to explain to him.
What the consortium has, we're a part of this school and the whole of Dane County that, um, help to get CDBG funding. We all have to qualify at a certain median percentage income level. So, a part of the consortium, we help each other out with that percentage at least, that to get the funding. Village of Black Earth has never qualified for that percentage, which we, we help all the other communities out.
Not that it really hurts anything, except if we're gonna do some other funding, it takes us out of that.
Yeah, we can't get federal funding.
Can't get federal funding for cer- certain other things, so.
So if we had a proposal to do anything else, and we're gonna go after federal money, and if we're part of this, we can't go after that federal money. But, from my understanding, we've never qualified for this, the CDBG funding either, right? Very rarely, or do we ever get benefit off of that money?
Town, right, Town and Country.
We applied for CDBG funding, I, I did the application to help Bulldog when Bulldog got that building from the village, and we were, we did receive a grant for thirty thousand to help him replace his roof. I had to go through an interview process at the county level, there was a heck of a lot of red tape to get that grant, and then Bulldog backed out and getting up the proposals he needed for that roof, and we lost out on the money.
But it was only thirty thousand.
It was only thirty thousand, and for us to get any other CDBG grant, save for housing assistance, we, it would have to be low-income housing in a, their project.
For, for through this.
Yeah. And we generally don't qualify for it because of.
He did tell me that there was somebody that got a low-interest loan one time, but he couldn't tell me.
That was a long time ago.
It was long.
That was a long time ago, we already knew that.
Yeah, yeah.
What, basically what it is, is we helped everybody else.
We bring, yeah.
If, if, if you're.
We bring our ruralness to them, with our higher.
Right.
Yeah.
If there were low-income, what's his low-income housing in the unit, or if we jod CDBG funding?
If we apply for CDBG funding for a housing project, it would have to be a low-income housing project coming into the village, and we would have to have our income levels qualified for that kind of process, we're, we're too high. Unless we go through a small community area specific, which Town and Country would have to get involved to help us get that survey. There's a lot of red tape.
Dane County gets to put the money where they feel it's needed.
Yeah.
So that's where the income levels are. So, I have not done anything with it, we don't need to do anything with it at this time, I'm still waiting for information back.
Some of our neighboring communities also, of course, got this, and they backed out based on the things that they were thinking.
They actually looked at, yeah. Somebody bought our size, a little bigger. Marshall.
Yeah, we already knew that Marshall was, was saying that they weren't enough, but, okay, so what are the odds that we're gonna get federal funding? So that we would say, okay, we're gonna, we're not gonna do this, because then we're gonna go after federal funding, because, you know, federal funding, there's a lot of red tape in that, and there's a lot of the same oops and, you know, income qualifications, and if you're gonna build, you're gonna have to build for low income, so I'm not, the federal's not gonna be any better than the state.
Maybe not.
Just one less layer.
This is county, not state.
Just one less layer to have to go through.
Um.
Patrick, what are your thoughts?
I don't see any advantage to being a part of this.
Well. No. I just want to get, I, because I don't, I don't know that I have one.
Well, unless, unless some information changes my mind, I agree with you, but that doesn't mean he won't get back to me and change my mind yet. He hasn't done it yet.
So we're.
Yeah.
Well, there's really nothing, we're past the deadline for responding.
Yeah. We missed their deadline, so it's moot.
Well.
Not part of it.
We're not part of it.
Oh, you can sort it out before you say.
A divorce isn't part of it, Maple Bluff's not part, there's like five other Miss Taliesin before Marshall.
You know, okay, so is this gonna come back to us next year and they're gonna say, hey, you wanna be part of this now?
They might.
Yeah.
They might, because.
Because isn't it, didn't we do it?
I think it's a five-year.
It's a three-year.
Three-year.
Every three years.
So it won't be for three years.
Unless they're real desperate.
And they might, so anyways, alright, let's move on.
So what are we doing, you want to table it, you want to say, no?
I just, we don't do anything if we're not gonna.
Okay.
I'll bring it back on if, if, if I get more information and then.
Okay.
So. Alright, discussion action on village board minutes seven-six, twenty twenty-two, and seven-twenty-five, twenty twenty-two.
I'm making a motion to accept the village's twenty-six, twenty-six, and seven-twenty-five, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What, which one?
Oppose?
Both of them, Danny.
I will abstain because of that.
Oppose?
Yeah.
Nobody, okay. Alright. Discussion action on financial treasury report.
Alright, um, okay. Alright, so your funded report is through the month of June at this point, um, all accounts are sitting at four point one million. One point eight million is reserved for the library and electrical substation. Uh, ARPA funds of a hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and twenty-four are sitting in the LCIP account in the general currently. I did set up a sum account, which we don't know, on LCIP, where those ARPA funds were moved and segregated away from other general fund dollars. I'm gonna move over to your revenue and expense report. Um, the general fund is through the month of July, at this point, it should be about fifty-eight percent of the budget of making our utilities. General fund will not be at that percentage yet until the audit tax settlements come in, which should be very shortly. Our revenues on the general fund are sitting at about twenty-three percent, with expenses at about forty-eight percent. Our electric, our revenues are sitting at sixty-one percent after the adjustment last month, with expenses at fifty-four percent. Water revenues are at fifty-eight percent, expenses at fifty-one percent, sewer revenues at fifty-nine percent, expenses at forty-one percent. Again, our August tax settlements will be coming in here within the next week or two, we're expecting about eight hundred thousand to come, um, or be settled between the county, the schools, and the village, uh, village's portion will be, um, about two hundred thousand of that. Our electric, again, continues to be reviewed, uh, one of the things that I've done, at least to the revenue and expense report that you're not seeing, because it's still a work in progress, is I do have every month being put in as a column on the revenue and expenses and tying it to the actual month expenditures and revenues, versus the cumulative totals that you see currently. That is a work in progress there, um, I'm gonna mention that the pool that was hit, uh, for County Day, we did receive an insurance check for a portion of it, about twenty-three hundred dollars. Uh, while the expense of that was at three thousand, that twenty-three received is minus a thousand dollar deductible that hopefully we'll get back from the party. We were successful with that, and the other pool that was hit, and the other thing that happened here in July is when we did our utility billing, our PCA rate calculation billed at the previous month, which was almost double from what it shouldn't. Uh, that was not an error, a human error here, we believe it was a glitch, um, Beth's computer went down in the middle of doing calculations and get picked up the previous month.
Say again, I'm sorry?
The PCA rate in this month's bill, so that's last month's rate, which was almost double from what it shouldn't.
Yeah, it's high.
So, though, why, the bills were.
That's part of it, absolutely.
Because I got a bunch of calls about that.
So, Civic has, um, a dummy adjustment on the PCA rate in our system, of course, up here in the month of August, it's July, and they're also working on the adjustment calculations for the taxes that were charged on that part. Not been brought into the system and adjusted off of customer.
And will be adjusted, I guess.
Yes, it will, uh, people, anyone who calls right now, I mean, they're, we're starting to see the credit, of course, for the PCA, the tax adjustments, I mean, probably within the next twenty-four to forty-eight hours. So, we've advised folks, of course, you know, pay your bill as it is that you've gotten right now, that credit will be reflected on the next month's bill for those adjustments. The other thing that's impacting our hires, you know, we did have five really hot days of well over ninety degrees, with several others in the upper eighties, so we saw a lot of higher electricity.
Almost had to pee for her to get on this online.
Me too, and vibrating.
Five hundred bucks for my house.
Wow.
Oh, someone left a, uh, someone left a hose on the shack.
Oh, did he really? Well, I just about fell down.
Thanks for participating in our survey.
I just about fell down when I got there.
Um, just a couple other notes on financials that are going on right now, is, uh, as I mentioned, the Cooper property closed and it's in the village's hands as of yesterday, um, it, it still needs to be recorded at the county level, but I do have a quick claim deed on the property.
Can I ask then, as long as it's, and I know that this is like personal, but, what about, whatever happens to the survey? I thought that survey was gonna happen.
Yep, okay, so.
With the whole transfer.
Sure, the survey is in progress, while Tony Walker was gonna do the survey, not just on Main Street, but also on the Cooper property. Grousewell is still picking up the cost of the Cooper property survey, he just hadn't finished it yet. I was expecting to see it here, probably within the next week, the last time I talked to him, it's been about a month, he was about two weeks out from getting that done, so I don't know if you've seen anybody out there.
I have not, and there's no other brokers or anything.
Right, so I know that.
I would have thought that'd be different.
Normally not, you find states, but.
Okay, thank you for letting me know, I'll follow up tomorrow. Um, but, budget preparations are underway, the DOR just released some preliminary reports. Our equalized value is up eighteen percent over last year, our TID value is up over twelve percent, and our net new construction is at three point nine two percent. While these are a lot of percentages, you're probably wondering, well, what the heck does that mean? Of course, our equalized value is, uh, you know, if we do any new borrowing, we can borrow up to a certain percentage of our total equalized value, so it gives us more borrowing capacity, we need to go out to do that. And that new construction is valuable, and the fact that while we have levy limits in place, that two percent levy limit that restricts for how much we can levy, then that new construction is taken into consideration of that levy limit and helps us be able to increase past that two percent limit, so that is helpful. The only downside to all of this is our assessed value ratio, this last year was about, I think it was at seventy-four percent. With the increase of our equalized value, it puts our assessed value ratio at sixty-eight percent. We do need a revow, and we have asked, I've asked our assessor for proposals to get that in the budget. Um, if we don't do it, because we're already in the fourth year, the state will come in and do it for us, which will be a lot more expensive. Except in my equalized value may go out, our assessed value ratios go down, and that's where we're at, so. A lot of stuff going on for the budget.
I do have a question under that, Quill Corporation, I noticed that there was a two hundred, no.
That's on the invoices, alright.
Yep, we're not to the invoices.
I'm sorry.
Alright, I'll make a motion we approve the financials as presented. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Alright, discussion action on invoices to be paid. God, thank you. Um, what is the, what did Quill Corporation charge for, what, what is the flash drive?
Oh, flash drives are the USB drives that go inside, so we can save data and move it from either. Like a thumb drive, they're thumb drives.
Oh. Okay, I just thought it was maybe something, something dispenser and go.
No, no, no.
Thank you.
Thumb drive.
Got it.
Where is Corin Maine? Corin Maine is where we purchase our water meters from. Water distribution supplies company.
I just go back to those flash drives, those USB drives, I mean, the people give them out as.
Yeah, right.
Why is it costing us all that money for those flash drives?
Oh, that's not the flash drive, though.
So that's the paper towel, toilet paper flashes, so.
Yeah, weird moth hole, things that go into that.
Okay.
I promise you, flash drives don't cost seventy-seven dollars.
They used to when I was in college.
Yeah.
Right, now you can get them pretty cheaply.
We get them in a, I think it's five or six thousand.
General code.
Yes, we, uh, put the puppy note ordinance into the class, we had to update our, um, liquor licensing as a result of COVID and being able to carry your drink outdoors. And, other part of that update. Building code requirements that the state required us to update our ordinance instead of it reading, um, it had to read. It was fair.
See, it's not common anymore. It's SBS. Safety and Professional Services.
Well, I don't have any more questions, so I will be to take action to pay the invoices.
I'll second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, reports Vanguard. Uh, we had a Vanguard meeting July nineteenth at six thirty, went over the annual report, um, progress and.
Thought it. Yep.
Next meeting is September sixth at five P M. Got anything to add?
Um, there's a small farm that came in over the two weekends ago, um, Saturday night, they had a few outages, guys worked most of the night. Uh, some major, just kind of a lot of often end stuff. Um, still getting quite a few, I should say, a few new customers, but, uh, a lot of them are kind of longer line extensions. So we got another one up on J, it's going to be about another eight hundred feet, so pretty good chunks of cable going in the ground, so. Um, yeah, bicycles up and running, everything seems to be going pretty good.
There's, there's, Perry's not here. Dean, Iowa.
All right, so the previous meeting was June sixteenth. Uh, basically they just approved bills. They did approve the budget as presented. Um, and there was no discharge violation. The meet, last meeting was July twenty-first and same approved bills, no discharge violations. We did, Blackers should have received their true up check for twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. Um, kind of curious of what account that goes in. I know we've.
That is, yep, that is the expense account that's on your revenue and expense.
So, which is a true up of everything? I just think we, that maybe along with that electrical thing, we should be seeing what we charge for sewer, because that's a true up and it should go back to the people, I believe. I mean, that's something we should talk about at some point in time too, I believe. Um, other than that, our next meeting is August eighteenth at six thirty P M.
We didn't have an E D C, M S.
All right, so we met on July fourteenth at six thirty in Mesa. Lot of discussion was around retention and getting volunteers and how we're going to keep the ambulance service up and running. Kind of same thing we've been saying for the last six months, a lot of attrition and not a lot of people coming back in to fill that. One of the things that we addressed was, um, changing the, the stipend amount, uh, the stipend rate, so we voted to increase that. And then the other option that we're looking at, and I wanted to bring to the board tonight, um, is running the ambulance out of the Black Earth Fire Department. So having part-time, having, um, it either be in Mesa at the M S station and then at other times be within Black Earth community at our fire station. Uh, the thought was that if we, we do that, then we can draw from the pool of volunteers within Black Earth that don't necessarily want to sit in Mesa for twelve hours, but would sit at home. So hopefully somebody has reached out to the fire department, um, and broached that topic. If not, I am here tonight to, to bring that, um, to awareness. So, I don't know if Mitch, if anyone's reached out to you.
I have heard that a thousand times.
Yeah.
From Black Earth, I would sit on that, but I don't want to go sit at Mesa for twelve hours.
Wow.
Perfect.
That's why I'll use me to tell you about that station, so.
That's exactly right.
I, I think that hurts.
Okay. So, oth- other than speaking, you know, on behalf of the fire department, I'll, I'll bring you back that, that at least the board was on board with that and, uh, we can kind of take steps to seeing what that looks like, um, in the future. Outside of that, it, business as usual, we'll have a budget meeting, um, on August twenty-ninth at seven A M. And then the next actual meeting is September eighth at six thirty P M.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to do library director.
Um, so we last met on, um, July twentieth. So we talked about a few things, um, primarily we talked about flooring, um, because we're still getting quotes on new flooring. Specifically, we're looking at carpet tiles, but, um, are hoping to make it. That way we can get that. We also got a grant from Fort Imprint for promotional materials, so things with our like bookmark, like magnetic bookmarks and sunglasses and some things like that, uh, that way we can give them a way to outreach and, um. Our patron door count, um, for June doubled from what it was from May. So, um, if that gives you a sense for how busy we've been during the summer, um, especially with summer library program, we're getting a lot of views. We started a local hold pilot project. And what that means is whenever we buy a new adult fiction book, it'll stay in the library for sixty days to fill holes for Black Earth patrons, but it won't be sent out to other libraries in the system. That way people in Black Earth have more access to these newer materials, even if they aren't necessarily placing holes. There's a greater chance of them just making it to the library, finding something new. We've already gotten a lot of great comments on that, um, but it is a pilot project, so I'm hoping it'll be permanent. I'm planning a local author fair for October twenty-first. I've gotten five local authors that are going to be presenting at that, um. Um, I'm also doing a Dane County housing program with the Tenant Resource Center on October twenty-fifth. And the friends, um, earned nine hundred dollars from their pie sale this. Um, and their book sale is coming up during field days, so we're getting excited for that. We have another program on the force, contemporary native art issues and misunderstandings and a teen pizza party on August thirtieth. And our next meeting is August sixteenth.
Thank you. Parks. Here.
Oh, did we skip Public Works?
Oh, I'm sorry. Public Works, I hope.
Yeah, I didn't want to, I didn't want to talk to Matt.
I'm hoping he'd miss it. Actually, we've covered a lot of what we went through, a lot of it was jetting, you know, uh, getting that motion in front of you guys. Not many other things, um, before I let Matt go, I thought in particular, one of the things that was, uh, suggested by Tyler, uh, due to the small community size, large purchases like sweepers and jetters can be out of reach. Perhaps under the umbrella of waterway protection, can get grants for a street sweeper and sewer jetter to support the overall goal of waterway protection. That would probably include hydrological studies and, uh, possibility of maybe a levy. And ditch clearing could be tied to surface water erosion and flooding prevention. Street sweeper and jetter purchases would also support the overarching plan. Uh, the four things that we thought would be good for a planner or a grant writer, should we bring one on board, would be the ditch cleaning, street sweeper jetter always, and upgrading to an electronic water electric metering system. Matt, I'll let you go from there.
Um, we got a lot of it covered, basically. Couple other things, we got the fence kind of band-aided back together at Veterans Park. We put some new paint on that. Uh, all the stumps are ground out of the parks. We've been trying to keep ahead on watering and with the new seating, uh, so the grass comes in in those areas. We had a demonstrator lawnmower come in, um, and we've talked with some other dealers about, uh, possible different machines, trying to make it more of a useful, multi-purpose year-round machine with being a lawnmower and for snow removal type situations. Uh, last week we got a hundred yards of wood chips in for the playgrounds. Uh, so we got those spread, been working on budget items and couple new meter installs done. Uh, we have had extra chipping last week, there's probably two days worth of chipping for just the storm damage or the wind that came through with some residents that had trees down. And there's a bunch more out this week, so there's going to be about two days worth of chipping as well. Uh, with that storm and wind that came through, I did have cross planes come in, uh, last Thursday and do a street sweeping of the village. Uh, other than that, we're busy as ever.
Next meeting is August fifteenth at one P M.
All right, um, so we met, uh, where'd it go? Uh, July eighteenth at six P M. We discussed a little free library at the Red Hawk subdivision. Um, one of the residents out there had procured all the equipment needed for it, all the material for it and everything and just wanted, basically wanted our permission to put it out in the park. Uh, so we worked with Public Works and, and Matt and to get that out there. So that was approved and, uh, I don't know if it's installed yet or if it's still in the process, but there's a little free library coming to the Red Hawk subdivision. Cooper Property, we kind of discussed that already. More ongoing with that. Um, and then the community park, um, we're looking at quotes, um, we need to re, basically replace that field. Just tearing up equipment, tearing up uniforms, making it so it's not really playable. So, uh, we're going to be looking at, um, quotes for that and working that into our budget where we can. We're also looking at extending that, the gate along, whether that be the west side. Um, so where the school is, the side where the school, there's a big kind of section that's open and it was, from my understanding, it was requested we leave that open, so the school could have access to the field. None of that property or property will be sold, however that turns out. Um, we want to extend that gate to kind of have that delimitation between, um, the ball field and, uh, whatever ends up being developed there. What else do we got going? Rip subdivision, we talked about signage, there's a little strip between the Rip subdivision and the Water Tower Park. It's a, a public pathway, but it's, um, can be a little bit confusing. And as far as, um, there's a, a residence right next to the pathway, so, uh, it's been brought to our attention that people are kind of wandering off the path into the, the residence yard. So they, we are going to look at, well, um, this year we're going to look at just cleaning it up, clearing up the trees, um, getting it mowed real well, making sure that it's as obvious as we can, and then we're going to look at, um, budget as, uh, uh, for future plans to kind of build that area up and make it more of a trail system, um, through there, um, with potentials for the multi-use trail and bike trails and things of that nature. Just kind of make it more of a actual trail versus kind of a, a dirt road, if you will. Um, we talked about the A E Ds, we have some other items, uh, disc golf, pickleball, different things we want to try to bring to the community to give people more opportunities to get outside and, and utilize the parks. And then we talked about, uh, we did some budget preparation, kind of, uh, big ticket items, we want to get on the budget and start thinking about how we want to handle those. The ballpark, Cooper Property, um, the trees for Veterans Park, those are all kind of the big items we have on there. We're going to start looking at making a three to five-year plan. A lot of these items are pretty expensive, they're pretty time-consuming. And we also want the community input on a lot of these, uh, so we're going to try to start building out a three to five-year plan for the parks as a whole, so that we're not just focusing on one park at a time and we can kind of build out, um, uh, build out what that budget looks like and everything. And like I said, we want to get community involvement, uh, down at Community Park, we're looking at putting in new, uh, park equipment, but we want to kind of have an open forum for the community to come in and kind of give us an idea of what they're looking for as far as outdoor activity in that park, instead of just kind of putting the, the run-of-the-mill stuff in there or, or targeting the wrong demographic, um, as far as like children's age and things like that. So that will be coming out, um, probably more and then beginning of next year, we'll probably start getting some of that engagement, um, after this year kind of dies down with budget and everything like that. Um, our next meeting is August sixteenth at six P M.
So I got. I have no, uh, no action to take on police committee, we did not meet. Coffee with the cop was very entertaining, very good. Our, uh, new deputy to be was there with his wife and child and, uh, it was overall a very good day. Got to hear how loud those sirens really are when they. All right, I have an update during police, that committee can finish taking up and, um, I, I sent an email to Ira, the lieutenant. Not a very nice one. There was an incident with some of our workers that heard gunfire and ended up being in the village, a child target practicing, sixteen-year-old with handguns. Called the non-emergency number, the deputy came, kind of gave him a little bit of a runaround, said followed up with Cartman later. Did not go to the house of the child, couldn't even check on it. And then there was a gun call two nights later at that house where a forty-five caliber was recovered from the sixteen-year-old. Was not happy. And, you know, what's this, see something, hear something, say something, and you don't even follow through? So, um, he has not gotten back to me yet.
I'm ready to handle it.
That was one of their training officers. Anyways, uh, just so you guys are up to date on that, um, I will let you know and police committee, I will forward emails to them. I'm sorry, but it needs to be brought back up.
Okay.
I'd like to add to the police, uh, I just sent out an email earlier that our new officer will be starting his field training, but probably won't be to us until December, November? However, we're talking October.
Yes, somewhere like.
Look at the money we're saving.
But we do need to probably a police committee meeting.
Well, I think, just, just for follow-up.
Yeah.
You're gonna? I, who's police is?
Me.
Me and some of the others. I don't think it's got time.
Well, but he has to give it up.
But if you want to do it.
He has to give it up.
I can give it up, we want to meet.
No, I do.
No, because you never get, we never had that last meeting to chance.
Yeah, I know.
A lot of my dollars committee has and then you'll have to call one so they can appoint a chair.
All right, how's this bus thing going?
Really well, from what I've heard.
I only heard about first one, that's why I was just wondering.
Well, one I heard they had twenty-eight kids, right? That was the first one?
No, eighteen the first one.
Oh. Only had twenty-eight.
Yeah, that's what, that's what. Um, I do have to like kind of back you up on that whole, uh, Dane County kind of letting us down. We had a dog, um, incident in the park. The dog was on a leash, lunged at a baby, not a baby, but a toddler. The parents called the non-emergency line, they said, yep, we'll transfer all this information to Cartman. Except for they didn't take any of the information from the complainant.
Okay.
So what are you going to get to Cartman, because there's no way for Cartman to know who that was.
There'll be a record as well.
Well, two weeks later that dog bit a kitten.
Yeah. Um. Actually, that was, actually, um, there was information about that incident, um, or an incident with the same dog from June.
Was that with another dog? Because a dog bit another dog.
No, that was my dog.
Yeah.
That was when that other dog bit my dog. Yeah, no, that was a different.
So anyway, if there was, there was two calls on that. I, I'll forward you the email. I, I checked up on that too, so.
All right.
Okay. Perfect. All right. I make a motion we go, go into both sessions pursuant to Wisconsin staff nineteen twenty-five. There's one, see, consider unemployment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation doubt on any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility in the state of court treasurer possession, roll call vote. I'll second that.
Miss Hossen?
Yes.
James Coyle?
Yes.
Scott Cather?
Yes.
Cam Lewis-Rindell?
Yes.
Jared Bramerson?
Yes.
Tyron Martin?
Yes.
All right. Thanks, Matt.
Might you be taking a five-minute back to work?
Huh?
Might you be taking a five-minute?
Thank you, have a good night.
You too, Dan.
Bye, Matt.
I was just hoping I could get a thirty-second introduction to the Cooper property.
For what?
The, the village purchased the Cooper.
No, they didn't, it was given to us.
It was given to us.
What, what's happening with Cooper property?
Conservation crew purchased the property from Mr. Cooper, gifted it to the village, now the village will turn it into a.
Green space.
Low-impact recreation.
Pre-access, open trail and.
For the conservation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where is it?
Right next to mine, where Dave Cooper lives.
The two houses down there.
Quick trip, okay, you know where Quick Trip is?
I do.
It's one with all the lights.
Yep, that'll be Quick Trip. There's a. Yep, that would be Quick Trip. There's a house right beside it, and then there's a big white house on the end.
And then another.
Before the cul-de-sac, that big white house on the right. That would be the Cooper property. It goes all the way back to the creek line.
Okay. And a little section across the street.
Cool. Thank you. Have a good night.
Yeah.
Don't stay up too late. Now, I'm hoping.
Now you gotta do it in public.
I make a motion, we rise from closed session.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Go ahead.
Aye.
Uh, motion from, or action? Motion?
Nope.
Okay.
Uh, next meeting, right?
Other business?
Yeah, any other business to be brought before the board for future agendas?
Yep, we are gonna have a request. Uh, Eric and Michelle Real want your request to announce to purchase property from the village again. They attempted in two thousand nineteen. Our village attorney had advised us not to. Uh, they wanna bring that back before the board with a new board here. Uh, the other thing is we have a storm water ordinance update that needs to be reviewed. Um, it's gone through our village engineer who recommended it. The attorney and Mrs. For the Black Earth Elementary School, it will be required because of the way it sits in the floodplain. And then we're already getting calls on Halloween hours.
I did. Always.
I think all, all of those things just down.
Did you, did you have something you wanted to change about a true-up check from Dane Iowa?
Oh, yeah, something we wanted to discuss.
Go on the next agenda.
Or what?
Town and country or political?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, that we already tabled, so.
Yeah, and then you did that too, the true-up?
Yeah.
True-up came in June at twenty-one thousand and it's hit that expense account, so that's where the auditor wants that put.
Oh.
Yeah, that's where the auditor wants to put, but it's, it's true-up for the bill that was overpaid to Dane Iowa. That's what the true-up is, is every time the, the residents overpaid.
You can put that on the agenda.
It should go back to the rest.
Absolutely, but I agree so.
That's what I.
Cause I mean, we're sitting at five, almost half a million in the.
Anything else for future agendas?
Anyways, yeah.
The true-up.
Meeting announcements, next board meeting is September question mark twenty-two.
Yeah, I know, because Labor Day is Monday this past, we would normally meet on Tuesday the sixth, um.
Vanguard's called that. I'm, I got a Vanguard meeting that night.
You do?
So.
That's at five-thirty.
I'm fine with, it's five o'clock, that's all.
Oh, five o'clock, yeah.
So we should be done.
We should be done.
So, are you looking to still have it on that Tuesday?
Might as well. We're already having a meeting. Might as well double dip. Where are you going? Okay.
So we're doing September fifth, sixth.
We're calling that, we're calling it on the best round here.
Alright.
Alright.
Some of us still work that day.
Next thing.
What did you say?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
What?
When is it?